Would we be in order if we called the meeting to session into session and perhaps our deputy mayor would agree to move public comment to the beginning of the meeting tonight while we're waiting on the mayor to join us?
It would not be out of order. I thought she was logging in a couple of minutes ago. Maybe she's having some challenges.
I'd make a motion to call the meeting to order and I'd make a motion to amend the calendar to move public comment to the beginning of the meeting.
I'll go ahead and second that. Madam Clerk, do we need to call the meeting to order into a roll call before we start voting on anything though, I'm assuming?
Let's do that first.
The only thing I don't have is there's some verbiage in accordance with the Brown Act, members of the Buenos sanitation district will be receiving simultaneous compensation. I don't know what the amount of that compensation is, so I don't have that verbiage when opening the meeting, but I'd like to officially call the meeting to order at 5:36. And you'd probably like to do a roll call vote, so go ahead Kathy.
Thank you. Please state your here when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Green?
Here.
Councilmember Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Present.
Councilmember Melendez?
Here.
All right, all members are present with the exception of Mayor Ritter, who should be joining us shortly. Also on Zoom, our city attorney Daryl Piper and city manager Patrick Johnson.
All right, with that said, Councilmember Franklin, I believe you wanted to make a motion.
I'd make a motion to amend our order of our agenda to take public comment at the beginning of the meeting this evening.
I would go ahead and second that motion.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote and then after, if you'd like, I do have those statements that I can read as well. So we'll go ahead and take the vote on moving public comment to the beginning. Please state your vote when I call your name. Councilmember Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Green? The motion passes and actually the mayor has just joined us. So the record will reflect that the mayor has joined us at 5:38. We'll give her a moment to get her microphone on. Can you hear us, Mayor? I think maybe she's having trouble. So I'm gonna go ahead and read the statements for her or for us. So the meeting's being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with the State of California executive order N29-20.
Right, now my speaker's not working.
Online. Oh, sorry. We're trying to... Okay, she's still having a little trouble. So in the event a quorum of the city council loses its electrical power or suffers an internet connection outage does not correct within 10 minutes, the meeting will be automatically adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearings will be continued to the next regularly scheduled evening meeting of the city council. Any other items on the agenda the council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. All right. And then actually, let me... Sorry. Pull up the Brown Act notice. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of the simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos sanitation district will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos sanitation district ordinance 2006-1. For members of the public that are participating through Zoom, you may raise your hand to indicate you would like to speak by clicking the raise hand feature on your screen or pressing star nine on your phone. Instructions on how to join the meeting through Zoom are provided on the agenda cover sheet. You may only speak on an item once and public comment is limited to three minutes. All right, Mayor, are you all set now?
Doesn't appear that the mayor can hear us.
I don't think so. Okay. So Deputy Mayor Green, then, you want to go ahead and do oral communications?
Yes ma'am, let's proceed with oral communication.
Okay, so I have two individuals so far who would like to speak on their oral communication. The first is, and I apologize if I pronounce your name wrong, Arnold Luffo Manriquez?
Yes.
Go ahead, you have three minutes.
All right, if I'm gonna speak in support of item D1, is this when I would do it?
Actually, we'll take that comment in a few minutes when we get to the discussion items.
Okay.
So we'll have you re-raise your hand then.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so then the next is Jimmy Lindeman? Go ahead Jimmy.
Good evening Mayor, council members and gentlemen. My name is Jimmy Lindeman. I'm a resident here in Vista for the last three years. I am also the vice president for the Vista American Little League. And just one, reaching out to kind of introduce myself. And then two, ask for some assistance from the city because currently our league is engaged with a property use agreement with the city of Oceanside for the use of French field on Lee Drive, what used to be the burn pit. In the early 2000s, there was some contaminants and that area was, as you know, remediated and it was on the Little League to kind of get that location back into operating order. We're a small nonprofit, very little revenue generating streams and doing what we can, especially with 2020 being the year that it was for most businesses, especially for youth sports that were canceled pretty much come March and we had zero fundraising. Been working very hard with Vicky Gutierrez at Oceanside, the real estate manager over there. But there's still a lot of work that needs to be done. So anything that the city of Vista is willing to do to kind of assist us get this ball moving forward to get those fields back up into good operating order to be safe for our children, as well as to help us negotiate renewed property use agreement with the city of Oceanside to extend it because we have now gotten to a year-to-year rotation. And just for us to put as much money that's needed to get that back up to operating standards to possibly lose it at any time, it's just not economically or fiscally responsible for us. So yeah, just anything that you could do to help us out, I definitely appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have any other individuals on the line who would like to speak under oral communication? We've moved that up in the agenda. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close opportunity for oral communication.
Thank you Kathy. With that, we will move to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, city manager?
Deputy Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda this evening, thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by using the raise hand feature or pressing star nine now. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. We have four consent items this evening. Would any of the city council members like to remove an item? All right, seeing none. Do we have any requests from the public?
We do not have any requests from the public, so we'll close the opportunity to make that request at this time.
None. I will go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll say it was moved by Councilmember Franklin, seconded by Councilmember Contreras.
Please state your vote when I call your name. Councilmember Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Green?
Aye.
And I think Mayor Ritter is still not available. We'll give her a moment. Mayor Ritter? Okay, so we'll go with that. Item passes 4-0 with the mayor unable to vote at this time.
All right, thank you Kathy. With that, we have one discussion item this evening. It's the Vista Economic Development Strategy, or the VEDS. Economic Development Director Kevin Hamm will introduce the item. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise hand feature or pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the presentation. Over to you, Mr. Hamm.
Good evening Deputy Mayor, members of the council. I'm Kevin Hamm, Director of Economic Development for the city of Vista. In 2009, the city implemented our first formal economic development strategy. This document, like most strategies, was updated every few years. The last strategy set the foundation for many of the successes that we see today. In February 2020, we hired the Nadelson Dale Group, our consultant, to assist in the development of our new economic development strategy known as the VEDS or the Vista Economic Development Strategy. This is attachment three in your agenda. To develop the VEDS, the consultant and staff worked with a committee and held several community meetings. At this time, I'd like to thank the committee for their time, input and participation in the effort. First off, we had Vista Mayor Judy Ritter. We also had Councilmember Karina Contreras. We had Alapuzo, who is president and principal of Lean Associates in North San Diego County. And he is formerly a planning commissioner in Encinitas. We also had Rachel Beld, who is the Vista Chamber CEO, former city staff member and a Vista resident. Adam Molnar, who represents several business park properties and a broker. Sudarshan Shanik, who is the director of the North County Small Business Development Center. Clay McCarthy, who is a downtown property owner, business in the downtown, a Vista resident in our community. Andy Hall, who is the chief impact officer for the San Diego Workforce Partnership. Eric Bravold, president and CEO of the San Diego North EDC. And Matt Sanford, at that time serving as the senior director of the San Diego Regional EDC. We had several meetings, they participated in all of those, about two hours apiece, as well as reviewing the draft documents and adding their input as we talked with them. So thank you very, very much to help us put this together. The development of this strategy was started prior to COVID-19 and the pandemic and the impacts. This document is not designed as a pandemic response. We have the Vista Economic Recovery Plan for that. However, the VEDS does consider the impact of the pandemic and incorporates those considerations into the recommended strategies. The goal of the VEDS is to provide a comprehensive roadmap for generating quality economic growth in Vista. There is no direct fiscal impact associated with the discussion and approval of the strategy at this time. Staff recommends that after you hear the presentation from our consultant, Roger Dale, that the city council adopt the strategy and direct staff to begin implementation by adopting the attached resolution. Now I would like to turn over the presentation to Mr. Dale, who will present the strategy.
Thank you Kevin and good evening Mayor Ritter and members of the council. I'm excited to be here with you this evening to provide a brief recap and summary of the process that we've been through over almost a year now with city staff and many members of your community. And if we could advance the slides, please. Kevin mentioned that we've had the privilege of working with really a tremendous committee that advised us at different points in the process, and I'll talk more about that in a moment. But I just wanted to acknowledge staff's excellent job in organizing this committee and keeping the process moving forward and especially the participation of Mayor Ritter and Councilmember Contreras. And Kevin has already mentioned the other members of the committee, but they really represent an excellent cross-section of your business community and other stakeholders as well as the public. And we're invaluable in, I would say, ground testing the types of strategies that we evaluated based on our experience in doing this type of work for other communities throughout the United States. Next slide, please. So as Kevin mentioned, we had the initial interview with the city back way back before the pandemic, February 2020, and really got going in earnest about April 2020. And it was really an opportune time to do this because the pandemic kind of brought to the surface a number of issues that will now potentially have long-term impacts on economic development opportunities for Vista. And while, as Kevin mentioned, this plan is not a short-term business recovery plan relative to the pandemic, we did interface with that effort that was the city's, you know, very rapid response that was appropriate at the time. But we're really looking at a document that is intended to have a shelf life of approximately five years. And just to kind of quickly go through the process that we've undertaken. First of all, we started with a SWOT analysis, which as you know, is an analysis of strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And as I mentioned, closely coordinated this process with the response that the city was preparing and has implemented for the pandemic. As part of the background research for our process, we did several studies. First was a target industry analysis. I'll talk more about that in a moment. But that really is intended to identify the types of industries or business types that would be strong candidates for growth in Vista and strong candidates to create quality employment in Vista in the coming years. We also looked at the city from a real estate development standpoint and did a market analysis that covered potential demand for retail, office and industrial. And all three of those land uses are things that, as you're aware, directly impact, are directly impacted by the pandemic. And we would expect that some of those impacts will be long-term in nature. So those were taken into account in the real estate market analysis. We had a number of interactions with the VEDS committee. First of all, we interviewed each of the committee members individually. And then we had a total of four meetings with them over the course of the planning period. And it was, as I mentioned earlier, really a privilege to work with this group because they're very connected to the business community and really the conditions on the ground in Vista that will influence your needs and your opportunities for an economic development program going forward. After that process, we established and prepared a draft of the VEDS and then went out for public input. We had a total of four community workshops, two that were specifically geared towards the business community and then two meetings open to the general public. And then based on all that input, we've prepared the final VEDS document, which we're presenting for your consideration this evening. Next slide, please. I mentioned that one of the core elements of our research was identifying industries that we believe would be strong targets for growth and not just numbers of jobs that they might create, but also quality of jobs. And we initially identified a total of 15 industry clusters as candidates for this process. And then through back and forth with the VEDS committee, narrowed that list to a top eight. And certainly the other industries that didn't make that top eight might become priorities later in the process, but these are our recommendations for the initial focus. And you'll see that we've got a broad mix or range of industries that would be suitable for a range of workforce skills, a range of land use types, some that would maybe be in office space, some that would be more likely in industrial or manufacturing space, and also a mix of things that are, have an existing presence in the city, as well as things that might not be really well-established in Vista but are strong in the larger San Diego County region and could grow in Vista as they run out of space in other parts of the county. So just to quickly go down the list, biopharmaceuticals, medical devices, both strong activities in North County, information technology. And here, based on the committee's input, the idea is to focus primarily on software rather than the hardware side of IT. Aerospace and defense, certainly a well-established activity in San Diego County and has an existing presence in Vista. Distribution and electronic commerce is an industry that has really been strong right through this pandemic and maybe even stronger than it would have otherwise been. And is an opportunity potentially to attract, invest, new investment in older industrial areas and can also have the advantages of tax base for the city depending on the type of user. Our next category is education knowledge creation. And one of the ideas there is to focus on reuse of the National University site and potentially leveraging that unique facility for other educational facilities. The next thing is food and beverage processing. An example of that would be the brewery activities that you're already have been successful with. And then the final idea is arts and entertainment. And these would be both positioned as an industry, but also as a way of creating an amenity to strengthen the downtown's position as a destination and a place for community gathering. Next slide, please. So the VEDS is organized in terms of 12 major strategies. And I'll just briefly go through those and then talk a little more about the specifics of implementation. So the first group are three strategy categories that relate to industry targeting. In other words, attraction of new business or business development and ultimately job creation around those new businesses. And the first is to focus the city's business retention, expansion and attraction efforts around those high priority industry clusters that we've identified. The second is to collaborate with regional partners to expand the availability of entrepreneurial development resources in Vista. And this is something that we're not recommending the city directly invest its resources, for example, in facilities for incubators or things that the city would be directly involved, but that there are a number of regional resources that the city could proactively serve as a clearinghouse to focus those opportunities in Vista and make them more accessible to prospective startups in the community. The third is to enhance the city's economic development marketing program. And we know that there are already existing broader branding initiatives and we're not suggesting a total revamp of that, but to integrate again these targeted industry clusters and the other priorities of the VEDS into that marketing effort. Next slide, please. The next group of strategies are what I would describe as umbrella programs. These are not directly involved in job creation or business development, but create an environment where you can expect to be more successful with business development or overall economic progress. Number four is to enhance the city's interface with education and workforce development partners. Lot of existing connections there. The idea is to strengthen those and reinforce them around the types of businesses that you anticipate growing in the community and their workforce needs. Make that great, better, even a better connection between your resident workforce and the job opportunities that we would anticipate creating through this plan. Number five is to elevate the city's reputation for business development and business and development friendliness and potentially doing that as part of actually a branded program. You might call it something like Vista Works. This is something that we are, have received consistently favorable feedback from stakeholders in the development and business community about Vista's business friendliness. So it's not something that we're saying is a, has been neglected at all. It's been something you're strong on. The idea is to keep that excellent position and to more proactively market it as part of your business advantage. Number six is to leverage the city's in-house resources for economic development through strategic partnerships, interdepartmental collaboration and community involvement. And again, this is something the city has successfully and effectively done already, is doing already. But we've identified specific activities in this plan that would be better carried out by other entities besides the city so that you can really focus your resources on the things where your efforts are most needed. One example of this would, the Chamber of Commerce would have a potential interest in leading coordination of the workforce development initiative and is already actually working in that, on that front. So that would be something that could be further expanded through this strategy. Next slide, please. Then the last group of strategies relate to land use or what we might describe as placemaking programs. In other words, physical changes that would enhance your attractiveness or accommodate, better accommodate quality growth. Number seven is to position downtown Vista as a regional arts and entertainment center. And as I mentioned earlier, that's on one hand is a target industry. There are a number of businesses and employment opportunities related to arts and entertainment, but it also has a broader advantage to the community in terms of creating amenities that are attractive both to residents, to visitors and potentially to employers as part of the type of environment where they might like to locate businesses. Number eight is to facilitate repurposing of high vacancy retail shopping centers or commercial centers. And we would describe that as anything that has a long-term vacancy level of 15% or more and potentially might have lost an anchor tenant or other conditions that would might make the long-term viability of those centers questionable. And this is another area that has been a challenge for many communities for a number of years due to the ongoing growth in e-commerce and online shopping and has certainly been accelerated during the pandemic. So this is something that we think the city can give some attention to in the coming years and also might provide some opportunities to create space for other land uses that you might not otherwise be able to accommodate, maybe things like industrial, residential or mixed use. Number nine is to coordinate with ownership of the Vista Business Park. And we know that this, this has been a major part, this property or this area has been a major part of Vista's economic development success story over the past decade or so. But as it kind of reaches build-out and capacity, we think it's important to keep it on the cutting edge in terms of the attractiveness of the properties and the types of tenants are there. And the city can have potentially a supporting role in facilitating higher and better use of facilities that become vacant or up for leasing over time. Next slide, please. And then continuing on strategies that deal with land use or placemaking, number 10 is identifying other commercial corridors or districts that might warrant attention in terms of reinvestment or repositioning. So the previous strategies identified some specific areas like the downtown shopping centers and the business park. This is more of a catch-all strategy that the city would proactively work with other districts or property owners to look for areas that warrant investment or reinvestment and to identify tools that the city might have available to support higher and better use of those properties. Number 11 is to conduct a comprehensive evaluation of the city's zoning and related land use policies. And it's our understanding that the city has a general plan update on the horizon. This would be an opportunity to kind of transfer the market analysis and other strategies that we've developed as part of the VEDS and have that be part of the input to the general plan update process. So it's really identifying what are the, what is the existing zoning and land use capacity of the city based on the existing policies and making sure that those are in sync with what we anticipate the market trends to be so that you're able to accommodate as much of that quality development demand as, as you can. And then the last item is to align the city's capital improvement plan or CIP with this VEDS. And what we're recommending here is a assessment of infrastructure needs in high priority development areas, some of which are yet to be identified as I, as I mentioned. But to prioritize infrastructure improvements, for example, things dealing with technology and internet capacity broadband service. internet capacity broadband service. Prioritize those in the CIP where where necessary. So that your VEDS is supported by the best possible infrastructure for the types of businesses and other development that you're targeting. Next slide, please. So I mentioned that there are a total of 12 strategies that I've just gone through. And they are, they will be carried out in terms of 73 specific action items that are detailed in the VEDS document. And I won't describe those this evening, but I'm glad to answer questions if you do have questions about the specifics. And of the 73 action items, we've identified 28 action items to happen in year one. And then additional 32 items in year two. And then 13 of them that would be longer term, year three or later. And just some important things to keep in mind about those action items. It sounds like a huge new plate of responsibilities that we're handing over to Kevin and his staff. But we think it's manageable for for several reasons. First of all, some of these things are activities that the city is already involved with. So these are not all new commitments to the economic development program. In many cases, they're existing activities that we're just suggesting realigning based on the priorities that have come out of this process. For those activities that would be new, new programs or activities, we've expected that they would be phased in over several years. And you can see even the way we've laid out the action items that that has been the case. And I would say that most of the things that would involve truly new activities have been postponed at least until year two. Year one is primarily kind of a a process of moving from where you have been focusing and repositioning existing programs around new priorities and then beginning to think about what might be implemented as new activities in year two and later. And then many of these strategies would be carried out in collaboration with non-city partners. And for each strategy area, the VEDS lists specifically the entities, both public sector and private sector, that we would expect to be effective partners for particular programs. And then some, as Kevin mentioned, there is not a direct fiscal impact associated with considering and potentially adopting this plan at this stage. Because some of the items that might involve new program investments have been deferred to later years. So you're really committing to consideration of those activities, but not committing to a specific program level or budget activity at this, at this time. Those things would involve, in some cases, follow-up research by staff, other community input to really understand what the priorities and resources might be that are needed to carry them out. Next slide, please. So again, I want to thank you for having me here this evening and and thank you also for the the opportunity of working with your community and the city staff on this project. We're excited about Vista's potentials and really look forward to seeing what improvements you can see in your community in in the coming years. I think you all deserve a commendation, I would say, for the success you've achieved already in economic development, the reputation that the city has. And the progress that has been made. We know that unfortunately, things in some cases have been set back to an extent by the COVID-19 pandemic. But longer term, the 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 track record that Vista has is tremendous. And we hope that this plan will be part of an opportunity, just an ongoing process of refining your targets and your priorities over time, based on the evolving market conditions. And so thank you again for this this opportunity. And at this point, I'd be glad to respond to questions. And I know Kevin is glad to participate as well. And any discussion that you might like to entertain on this, on this item. So thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for your presentation, Roger, and thank the entire VEDS committee for all of their work on it. I know Councilwoman Contreras and Mayor Ritter were both members here that were involved on it. With that said, before I go to the council with any questions, city clerk, are there any members of the public that have any questions? Or is the council okay with going to the community first? Yes, okay. Ms. Valdez, are there any questions from the public first?
Yes, I have two speakers. But first, I'm going to go back to our, our new our new CFO, sorry. Enriquez. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Dear honorable mayor and council members, my name is Arnulfo Manriquez, president and CEO of MAC. We, on behalf of MAC, I am pleased to support the expansion of job opportunities and education workforce development as laid out in the Vista Economic Development Strategy. MAC is a local nonprofit organization. And when I say local, it's county, you know, we do work all over the county of San Diego. Dedicated to assisting individuals and families become self-sufficient. In opening our doors in 1965, we have grown as the needs of our communities have grown. And today, we provide a full spectrum of programs to help families enhance their own lives through five core pathways of services, which is advocacy and leadership, economic development, education, health and wellbeing, and housing. We have been operating in Vista for over 30 years. And in 2020, we relocated our main child development administration offices to Vista to a 30,000 square foot building on Bell Terrace known as MAC North Campus. This location houses over 50 staff members and is our north San Diego County hub where we house our child development programs at. We operate 17 preschools in North County with over 350 employees and MAC North Campus is also the future site of our next head start preschool later this year. And I believe it's also I know the mayor is an honor, but I think it's where she launched her first run for public office over, like, I think over 20 years ago, she had shared before. But MAC brings high-quality early childhood education to more than 2,000 families across North County. And we know that preschools play a critical role for employers in growing and hiring as they allow for parents to go back to work. We are proud to collaborate with key groups, including the San Diego Workforce Partnership, San Diego Revitalization Task Force, and the San Diego Housing Federation, as well as many other nonprofit partners that are making that vital, that are vital to the economic growth, resilience, health and wellbeing that makes Vista a wonderful community. We are pleased to offer our expertise and any other resources we might provide relating to expanding outreach to underserved neighborhoods to enable you to move this robust economic development plan forward. Thank you for your leadership on this strategy for the future and we are here supporting this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rachel Beld. Go ahead, Rachel.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council members. I'd like to thank the City Council and staff for your proactive approach in undertaking this effort. As a CEO of the Vista Chamber of Commerce, I had the pleasure of serving on the committee and I'm happy with the resulting document. I believe this plan will positively position Vista as we navigate the upcoming recovery and beyond. The strategy is built on the attributes that make our community special and highlights the importance of the city's downtown core, business park and other commercial areas which can be leveraged to improve our community. In addition, I appreciate that the plan includes the opportunity for the city to engage with organizations and partners whose expertise can be utilized to implement the various components of this robust plan. Thank you again for undertaking this effort. The Vista Chamber of Commerce is proud to be your partner in furthering economic opportunity and vitality in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I show no other individuals wishing to speak on this item, so we'll go ahead and close public comment at this time.
Right. And I see our mayor here. Are you up and running, Madam Mayor? No, okay. It's okay. I'll go ahead and finish it up. All right. With that said, do we have any questions or comments from the council? And I guess we'll start with Councilmember Frank. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you very much. I just want to recognize all the good work from all the members of our community who participated. Our outside consultants, our economic development team and all the staff that participated in our chamber. We appreciate all of you taking the time to invest in our business community here, putting your heads together to help us formulate a plan to help our businesses grow and thrive here in Vista. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Councilmember Contreras?
Well, I just want to say that it was an enormous honor to work with Mayor Ritter and other members of our community and experts to develop a plan that takes into account strengths that we have. And looking at what future, economic futures on the horizon and how we can get there and better position our residents in the city of Vista to take advantage of opportunities that are currently unfolding and that will be unfolding in the horizon. The document is very comprehensive. It looks at everything from, you know, workforce development with our youth partnering, you know, them up with mentors that we have in our business community. And also even looking at certain corridors here in Vista north of the 78 that could be leveraged to help support our, our robust economic engine that we want to, to keep moving forward here in Vista. Also, you know, even in the document, we're looking at, hey, you know, we have a Sprinter station in our transit center that seems a little bit disconnected from our downtown, but could actually be utilized as a bigger asset and be better connected to our downtown, especially if we start moving in the direction of having our downtown become an arts and entertainment part of our city, right? Because we know that there's never going to be enough parking for everybody that we want to come into Vista. So some of those folks might be coming through the transit center. So we want to make sure we welcome them into our city and have a seamless transition from utilizing public transportation to getting right into the downtown and experiencing our food and our different business amenities that continue to pop up. So I am extremely proud of this document. And again, it's just been an honor to be a part of it. And the the future for Vista, you know, I'm really thankful to previous councils and to the current council for creating a very strong financial footing for our city to be able to have these more creative discussions is how do we better position our city so that we connect the assets that we already have and be able to launch from there and create a more inclusive workforce opportunity for our residents here. So I think it's incredible. And I look forward to this plan unfolding.
Thank you, Councilwoman Contreras. You're not excited at all about that. I love it. Thank you for all your work on it as well. Councilwoman Ruben Lindes.
Yes, thank you so much to everyone who collaborated on this document. It really does capture the spirit of Vista and how we want to see our community grow and develop and have everybody flourish economically here in Vista. I am, I just have one question, kind of curiosity about some of the partnerships that are outlined here. Specifically related to labor unions. I am a, you know, a big supporter of anything that's able to bridge the gap between our workforce, right, and these economic opportunities. And a couple of months ago, I got a really great opportunity to go to a pipe fitters training program on Camp Pendleton that had a really amazing training program and was just really fruitful for the men and women who were training there. So I do see labor unions listed as one of the potential partnerships here. And I'd like to hear from whoever is able to answer a little bit more of how we can partner with, whether that's trade schools and labor unions with this economic development plan.
Sure. Thank you for that question. This plan recognizes that workforce development is a critical piece of economic development. And historically, these were kind of two separate fields. You had your people working on getting new businesses and you had your people working on workforce development. And then there wasn't necessarily a good connection between the two. I'd say over the past 20 years in the economic development profession, it's been recognized that workforce is probably the single most important asset that a community has to sell itself. You know, you used to think about things like physical infrastructure and other hard attributes of the location. But now I would say that workforce and skilled workforce, skilled, trained workforce is right up there, if not more important than all of those other attributes. So we have included, you know, a full strategy related to workforce development with a number of partners. It's one of those things that the city tends not to be directly involved as a service provider. You're not a, you know, a school district or workforce development organization. But you obviously have a very direct interest in what those other organizations are providing in the way of services in your community. One of the biggest areas, and this is true of just about everywhere we've worked, one of the the biggest challenges in workforce development is there's often a disconnect between what the private sector needs in terms of employees and the types of training programs that are available in the, in the public sector or in the workforce development community. And there's a constant need for a connection, basically an information flow between the training organizations, whether it's school districts or trade unions or workforce development organizations. And the public or the private sector firms that they're ultimately serving in terms of creating a pipeline of talented workers. That's where we would see the connection between the, or the, the role for the trade unions in this type of a plan. It would be under that workforce development heading. And specifically, you know, we kind of review the list of activities that are targeted as far as target industries. To the extent that those are things where there are strong representation of trade unions and strong trading and apprenticeship programs for trade unions, we would see those as being a core element. And we would expect that, you know, the unions would have a seat at the table in those discussions about what are the priorities for training? Where can they have a role in training? And how do those connect with the specific skill needs of the workforce relative to the types of business growth that you expect in the coming years?
Right. That's great. Thank you so much. And it's definitely right. It very there's so many different opportunities, right? Whether that's through hospitality and some of the vision outlined in this document related to entertainment and the arts in downtown to even, you know, our food industry here in Vista. And I did have another question concerning land use and community spaces. So I know that one of the things that a lot of residents are interested in is being able to break into their own independent business ventures, right? And it can be really hard to do that without certain spaces available to them. Vista recently was able to have a great new opportunity with the Film Hub here near downtown. And I'm curious what are other opportunities to have sort of cooperative or collective spaces, whether that be industrial kitchens or other things like that, that would allow, you know, the use of space, right, to be utilized by, you know, many people in the community and kind of expand opportunities for people who want to, you know, be creative and start a business here in Vista.
Sure. And I think that there are a couple of strategies in the plan that would encompass that. First of all, there's one of the the very fundamental aspects of this is creating opportunities for entrepreneurial development. And that could include the types of small ventures that you're talking about that often need the support of, you know, an entrepreneurial system beyond what is available in many communities. And again, this is something we're suggesting that the city leverage the resources that are already available through regional organizations and partnerships. And focus those entrepreneurial development resources on the types of industries that would be, you know, appropriate for, for small business startups. Secondly, there's kind of an across-the-board focus in this plan on land use changes. We can see things like retail, major retail buildings. It's foreseeable that those will become surplus in the, in the next several years because of the way the market is trending. Some of those facilities could very well be reutilized for, let's say, some type of an incubator to accommodate community kitchen or some other thing to accommodate small business startups. This is something we typically wouldn't recommend that a city directly be the landlord for and invest in it in that way. But again, to perhaps develop partnerships between property, private property owners, the entrepreneurial development support system to create shared workspaces or shared business development spaces. development spaces in those areas. And I think within the downtown itself, there, for certain types of businesses, that might be an appropriate location to think about, you know, small art-based businesses or small performance-based businesses that could be operated on kind of a part-time or a seasonal basis in flexible types of spaces. And I think there was some specific interest in that from the art community and Vista as part of our community workshops, actually.
That is great. Thank you so much for all your work, and I really appreciate your answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you again, Mr. Dale. And yeah, I mean, having this VETS document with 73 specific action items, you guys really took a whole lot of time to break it down. The workforce development is a huge thing for me. As a kid growing up in Vista, I know Councilmember Contreras, Councilmember Melendez, we're all, you know, K through 12 Vistaites or Vistons. And, you know, there wasn't a lot of opportunity for workforce development when I was in high school. And I didn't know there were real estate companies and investment companies and land developers and, you know, people who just get properties entitled. I mean, the amount of businesses that we deal with as a city and as a chamber is amazing. And I really feel like developing the talent that we have here in Vista is really going to bring our city, you know, up another level, because we have amazing people who live here in our city, as, you know, you saw from all of our workshops and everybody who was on there. So that's a big thing for me. One question I did have is, on your presentation on page six, you mentioned the Vista Chamber in the Workforce Partnership and Workforce Development. But on page 43 of the VETS document, under Strategy Four, there's no mention of the Vista Chamber of Commerce with a workforce partnership. And as much as I'm sure San Diego Workforce Partnership is great, and I'm so happy they're going to be opening a office Vista Unified School District, I do feel like, at least for me as a business owner in Vista, the Chamber is really the key connector between the businesses and the schools and the kids. And I'm very responsive to the Chamber when they ask, do you need interns? Do you need helpers? And I just really want to make sure that we're really pouring into the relationship between our Chamber and our local businesses as opposed to just passing the buck and writing a check to, you know, a company who, you know, they may have more, you know, I don't know, experience in that situation, but I really trust Rachel Belt and her team and think they could plug in our students with really good businesses within our city. So that's something I was asking, and I know it's, it's in green, so it's a couple of years out, but it's something that I want to make sure we're all on the same page with, because I don't want to just have some random company, you know, in the city trying to place people. I want somebody with those relationships. So please speak to that a little bit.
Thank you. Can you, I want to make sure I know which page you're talking about in the document so I can make sure we...
Oh, Roger, he's talking about page 37 in the VETS document, which would be page 43 in the council agenda packet. And I would say that, Deputy Mayor, yes, we definitely would include the Chamber. And the Chamber has been working with us hand-in-hand in this, so that should be something that we can easily add in to the partners.
Perfect. And when they did the overview, he definitely mentioned it on his strategies. Number six specifically said the Chamber would lead that coordination, but if I'm approving a document, I just want to make sure they match what I'm being presented, if that makes sense.
I guess, but I'm looking at that, it does say Vista, the, in bold, and their partner, partnership resources.
Since the Chamber of Commerce is the potential lead, yeah.
Yeah, my, I think my concern was more with like the actual D E F G. Like, I wanted them to, you know, like, are we going to allocate the Chamber? Like, what's their role? I don't just want to say they're a partner. I want to say they're gonna, you know, they're gonna coordinate it. They're gonna reach out to businesses. They're gonna provide a list of the available internships for Vista Unified to place within our local workforce, because that's where you're going to get the info from, not from San Diego Workforce Partnership. Does that make sense?
Okay, absolutely. So we'll work with staff to fix that, make sure that that's really reflected the way it should be. So I think that's a great, great point.
And I, I mean, from a funding standpoint thing, I want to make sure that that funding is going locally, if that makes sense. And obviously, my council has to agree to that, but I think having the funding stay local with local entities who are placing in, you know, it all just saying local is big to me. When I, when I see a San Diego name, it scares me a little bit, because we're Vista, and Vista knows Vista better than anybody else. So I want to make sure our money is being used the most effective way possible.
Thank you. We appreciate that comment.
Okay. And then the only other thing that you didn't mention for creative businesses is we do a business walk, and we used to prior to COVID, and we used to stress with all of our businesses that we have a makers' lab. And if you want to come down and make stuff in this makers' lab, we used to have that. And Kevin Ham, maybe you can speak to, do we still have the makers' lab? How can we put our businesses in touch with that makers' lab, with the 3D printers? And I mean, all the resources we used to have, is that still a thing?
Yes, Open Source Maker Lab is still on the business park, and they are still working with businesses in the business park and throughout the community. And that is one of the great assets that we have in our business park, because it really supports businesses. And so whether it's from the food industry, because they've worked with craft beverage industry and automating some of the things that they needed, all the way up to Carbon by Design, which is involved in aeronautics as well.
Right, sounds good. Well, thank you. Yes, sir, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that, and we, again, we're glad to make that reference and to fix the document for that and appreciate that input. One of the themes, or maybe the overarching theme for this document that I didn't necessarily emphasize in the presentation this evening is to position Vista as a community of makers. And I should give credit to that, to Rachel Belt with the Chamber of Commerce. I think that idea came out of our initial conversation with her. So that's, I think, very consistent with the type of thing you're talking about, and we just love that kind of overarching theme for your community's economic development program.
Right, sounds good. Well, this was a receive and discuss item. Do we need any further direction, or do we need a motion on this item, anyone?
Yes, it would be adopting the attached resolution.
Okay, I will accept the motion. You want to make one?
I'd make that motion.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Franklin, seconded by Councilmember Melendez. City Clerk, do your thing.
All right, please take your vote when I call your name, Councilmember Melendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
I just want to say aye, but I want to make sure that we are including what Deputy Mayor Green emphasized, so. Is that part of the motion and the overall direction that we're giving?
Absolutely.
Okay, awesome. Aye.
Great. Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Green? Is an aye? Now we can't hear you. Mayor Ritter?
Aye, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Was that a yes?
Yes.
All right, so the head item passes unanimously with the inclusion of the comments Deputy Mayor Green asked for.
All right, well, we have already done our oral communications, so I assume with that we would move on to council comments. So I'm going to start with Mayor Ritter. Do you have any comments, Madam Mayor?
Just to apologize for computer problems tonight, oh my gosh. I, it usually works perfectly, and when it doesn't, it doesn't. So I have a different computer here, which I'm not familiar with. I can hardly figure out the buttons, so. Anyway, but I'm glad to be here and glad to hear what's going on, and you did a great job, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for all your work on that VETS committee as well. Councilmember Franklin?
Something else, yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Contreras?
Just want to thank all my coworkers on staff for an incredible, you know, just alignment of what our goals are as a city and working on these different documents and strategies that are going to get us there. And to, to you all, my colleagues, for always bringing up really great questions and discussions and comments for the items that come before us. Thank you very much, everyone.
Councilmember Melendez?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to say thank you to, of course, staff and all my colleagues who've been working so hard and all my fellow council members here. And I also want to say thank you to the community for all of those who submitted applications for our boards and commissions. Those applications closed this past week, and I'll be reviewing those and reaching out to the folks who applied. And over the next couple of meetings, that will be available for us to appoint folks to those boards and commissions. So really excited, and I appreciate everybody who participated, and I hope everybody has a wonderful safe night.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I will also thank everybody who applied for the commissions. I have some interviews set up for Friday. Everybody who is serving and interviewing, thank you so much for serving the city. It's a huge responsibility, and as a council, we really appreciate your feedback. And you're kind of our first line of defense in all of those issues, whether it's traffic, parks and recs, planning commission, you name it. We need you guys out there to be our set of eyes and ears. And thank you, Mr. Johnson, for sending me the verbiage on how to run a meeting. Came in a little late, but we figured it out. And Madam Mayor, we're going to do some computering between now and next meeting, because that was no fun. So with that, I will now go to my city manager. Do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a couple. The city is still seeking community's input for new parks in some of our areas that are underserved with park amenities. One is in the townsite off of Benito Juarez, and the other is Breeze Hill. And so we're going to have virtual community meetings, and the next one is tomorrow night, which is February 24th. It's going to be at 7:00 PM, and residents can provide their feedback at that virtual meeting. They can also provide their feedback online via survey. So if they want more information, they can go to cityofvista.com at our website, and it would be slash new parks where the information would be. At the last meeting, Councilmember Franklin had asked about the number of shelter beds that the city contracts with and the availability of those beds. And I just wanted to let everybody know, we do contract for 10 shelter beds, and we do have five that are currently available, two in Carlsbad and three in Escondido. And our social worker, as well as Sheriff's Department, are actively trying to work with the homeless population to get them into those shelters and get them assistance that they may need. So, but there are five available. And then the last thing I wanted to mention tonight is that the county is launching the new emergency rental assistance program with over $100 million that is available, and it's available to residents in the 16 cities that are participants. So basically, all of the cities in the county, with the exception of San Diego City and Trula Vista, who have their own program. And for more information, you can go to the county's website, which is COVID-19 Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And there's a lot more information for not only residents but landlords as well. So thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor, if I may, just very briefly, I just, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for the update on the number of shelter beds available. I want to continue, for all those who are watching the council meetings, to make the point that our community-oriented policing, cops, deputies are out actively, along with our social worker. We are offering housing and assistance medically, you know, detox programs, mental health assistance, housing. We are offering a full range of services proactively to all who are experiencing homelessness in the city of Vista. We are also proactively working to enforce our codes and to keep the city clean and to eliminate encampments. And, but it's a, you know, it's a, it's a two, you know, it's a dual approach. We're offering all the services that folks need while we're working to try to keep our community clean and safe. And I really want everybody to know that. It's an important thing. You know, just lately, it's, you know, the problem has exploded. I drove past somebody on the way home tonight who was laying on the corner of the intersection of the off-ramp of SR 78 in Sycamore, and I took a photograph of him, because they were laying with one of their legs in the lane of travel. And I sent it to our sheriff's deputy. Just incredible, the problems that we're facing. And I really want everybody in the city to know how hard the council and our sheriff's deputies and all of our city employees are working to try and solve this problem. And we're not, we're not approaching it from any one direction. We're coming at it from every direction we know how. And we're all of us on the council eager for your suggestions and input. Hope you would call me if I'm your councilman, or call your member of the council, or call the mayor, and share with us what you think we can do. We'll continue to explore new ideas and implement them on your behalf. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Franklin. And yeah, I know there's a lot of homeless issues on a lot of private properties here throughout the city that we've all been contacting about that we're working hand-in-hand with the city manager and code and our sheriffs to try to keep the streets clean and, you know, make Vista look like the city that we all know and love. So, and we do have beds available. So if you guys are out there as citizens doing outreach, we can help find actual warm beds for our homeless population and hopefully get them up from the situation that they're in. So something.
Right, thank you.
One other thing I wanted to mention that City Manager Johnson spoke about was the rental assistance funds. There was a big news story that the city of Trula Vista allocated $17 million for their citizens for rental assistance and landlord assistance. I immediately called our city manager to speak about it, and I was informed that that money does come from the county. And what Mr. Johnson was saying is there's about $50 million at the county that will be available for rental assistance and landlord assistance. All members of the city of Vista will be able to apply through the county, and our city housing department and your city council members can help point you in the right direction as well. So just want to make sure you know Vista isn't not providing funds for our residents. We also have funds available for that need, and we will help point you in the right direction if that's something you're struggling with. With that said, City Attorney, do you have any additional comments?
I have nothing additional this evening. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. And our city clerk?
Nothing, thank you.
All right, with that, I would like to thank my council, thank city staff, and at 6:42, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.